Tuesday, September 10th. This is our regular school board meeting and then we will also have a public hearing at 5:30. Please, again, we ask if you would just bear with us. We may be going a little slow at times because we are now part of Board Docs and so we have a lot more information that's accessible, but that also means that for my colleagues and myself, it helps us to just take this a little slower than we sometimes have taken our meetings in the past. With that, our opening exercises are with Ms. Sandy Counts, the Honorable Sandy Counts, and I wanted to turn it over to you.
All right. I'm just going to take a few minutes to tell you why we're all very proud citizens of Citrus County. Sunday morning news said there's still 6,000 people missing down in the islands. And we have a father that's living with watching his little five-year-old son be swept off the roof. And the death toll is mounting, but then as I read our chronicle, we have our churches, Doug Alexander leading with the Church Without Walls. We have our civic groups, especially the Rotarys, and we have our schools, all amassed tons of information. Citizens Gary Bartel Jr. didn't make a trip. They didn't need the airboats because the water had receded. But I'm so proud of them in Citrus County and knowing that Florida is still dealing with destruction from the Keys from years ago and Mexico Beach and yet everybody is still reaching out and helping these people that are in so need, they've bought everything. So that's keep them in your prayers. Stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're done. I'm sorry. Okay. Didn't want to take your time away. Tomorrow will be September 11th. It is always a solemn day in this country. We have a very special person who is guarding us today, who I know Deputy Farady will always hold that day very special. He's made numerous trips to Ground Zero and we appreciate what he's done for the first responders in keeping that legacy alive and making sure that that story continues to get out. We have other members of this community that have gone so far to make sure that that day is never forgotten and it never will be. So if we could just take a moment and bow our heads for a moment of silence. With that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
I'm going to go to adopt, excuse me. Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. And I don't know if that... There it is. And then if you would just recognize your votes on your system now. And we will move on to citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments here today?
No, we don't.
I have no ring cards. We'll have another opportunity at 5:15 and then at the end of business at our meeting. Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Counts to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Can you repeat those motions, I can't hear.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, a motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Counts. And if anybody's following our scoreboard online, you can actually see our voting, that it actually shows it. It does also here show that on the screen. Does it show those votes after or does afterwards?
Does.
Did he have to say, did you just ask for it again?
Yeah, no, it's just for some reason it's not.
Is all of us voted?
It's unanimous. Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to recognition then of donations.
I don't think this is the case to start. There aren't a match. Usually we have an amount.
Oh, that's a great...
I think that's important to add.
I agree.
Recognition of donations. Approve the $1,000 donation to Christopher River Primary from Parent Teach Organization. Approve the $500 donation to Forest Ridge Elementary from the VFW Post 10087. Approve the donation to woodship, excuse me, approve the donation of wood shop equipment to IMS valued at $2,175 from Rochelle Brickman. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Law Offices of Grant and Dozier. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Central Maintenance and Welding. Approve the $600 donation to Citrus High School from G.M. Mechanical. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Ted Williams Museum. Approve the $500 donation to Christopher River High School from Lynn Sisto. Approve the $3,000 donation to Christopher River High School from Curry Roofing. Approve the $500 donation to Christopher River High School from Phyllis Beard. Approve the $5,000 donation to La Canta High School from, sorry, Gas, Joann, and Terology Associates. And approve the $5,000 donation to La Canta High School from Marissa and Jeremy Applegate, which is a total of $21,275 in donations.
Thank you so much to this community for those amazing donations. And yeah, maybe if we can do on the line item, if there's a possibility to include in the title the amount.
Sure. The amount, the total amount of donations?
Yeah, no, the... Yes.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'll explain it afterwards.
Okay.
I'll explain it afterwards.
Okay.
With that, we're going to move on to the superintendents making a difference aboard. That was on the consent agenda. They have been on our consent agenda that way. The recognitions have always been separate as far as she reads them, but they've all been part of the consent vote.
Oh, I know they've been part of it.
We could certainly move those into that category. Let's do this and then we'll talk, listen, take a minute and talk about it.
Today, we're going to recognize one of our staff members that we truly believe has made a difference and we know that our staff impacts many, many lives and many of the lives of our students in a positive way. And after you see the video today, which I don't need to say a lot because this video will speak for itself, I would have to say that Becky Schaefer not only impacts lives of our students, I truly believe she saved the life of this student. So Becky, would you come forward, please? Can you see it? Everybody see it okay? Can you all see it?
Well, yeah.
Sorry. When you look at your projector, it's Tom's fault.
Display mode.
So she actually yells at the student to wait and then he dumps back on the bus.
You see, my words could not explain that because I tell you, if you don't get tears in your eyes thinking about that, upon a marvelous job she did, just her alertness and her desire to keep our kids safe. So on behalf of me, the school board, the entire district, we just thank you for what you do every single day.
Thank you.
We're going to just go ahead and move on. I'm sorry. We're on to item 8B. That's going to be the calendar committee.
So I'm here to invite Amy Crowell, our Director of Research and Accountability, to gather input from the superintendent school board in the development of the 2021 school calendar.
Good afternoon. All right. I just have a very short, and really this, the PowerPoint really is just so that I can have a spot to actually type in your feedback. Each year before our committee meets, our district committee meets, we get feedback from you and to see what are some of those non-negotiables or real strong recommendations that the board has regarding our district calendar, that is for our K through 12 schools. I know Ms. Counts, you serve on that committee as well. So, oh, it's fun. It's a lot of fun. So first, just here showing you again that we have representation from all areas, all departments, all schools that do participate in the development of the different calendars that we then in turn send to the schools and all departments for voting and our staff committees as well vote for a calendar and then we bring those back to you. The timeline here is just telling you where we are in the timeline. As you can see, we're on step four where we do seek your input. We do have a plan to on the 18th for the committee to get together to develop two to three different calendar options and then we bring them to you for you to approve those options before we then have all of the schools and staff committees actually vote. And then, of course, we bring it back to you.
Could you go full screen on that?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Come on. No problem. Okay, so like I said, we are here just to get your considerations, your recommendations, things that we just need to remember to consider. This didn't really change much from last year, this first one, that we do have those testing windows that the state has set that we really can't do much about, that we have starting May 1st, a lot of our students are testing, doing all of the state assessments and it's a four-week window starting May 1st. And on April 1st, there's a two-week window that our grades three through 10 are testing and that's a two-week window there. We did have a statute there just to remind you. School start date, the school start date is still August 10th. That is what's in statute. We again can't do anything about that, no matter what day of the week it starts on. So August 10th, but at least now we did look and you see there in parentheses, August 10th for 2020 is on a Monday, so we won't be facing any of those issues hopefully. We also remember that we have final exams in our high schools at the end of each semester. One of the big things I have there in red is something that we just found out about. Every year, we always try to have our spring break, of course, coincide with the county fair and that is very important for numerous reasons. We have a lot of students that participate in the county fair and for them to miss school or if there is testing involved during that time, it just is way better when we have it during that same week of spring break. We talked to Hal Porter at the Fair Association last month and actually today and they said that when they set those dates, they do it on a three-year contract basis and they are in the process right now of still negotiating that and figuring out what the actual date is going to be and they said they will not have that in stone until probably December. He did tell us that there were some estimated dates of that, as you can see, that March 22nd to March 26th is what they're going to be, I guess, like looking for and asking for, but he was, he said that he's not able to tell us that in stone until they have the committee there and they negotiate. And once they do, they'll have them three years worth of dates set and we will then know for three years in a row what the actual dates are. So one of the things that I wanted to, as you can see here, board recommendations and non-negotiables, that second one there was to align the Citrus County Fair with spring break. I was going to ask for your feedback for this. Do you recommend our committee to convene, you know, like we have planned right now during the month of September in developing the calendars with the assumption that the fair will be during those dates that Hal Porter is going to be recommending or do you suggest we wait to do the committee until December and then we would, of course, be coming back to you and probably until like February-ish with those, with the actual, with the votes, voting being done? So I mean, it's something that, you know, I mean, we don't know for sure. It's not 100% that those are the dates for the fair until Hal Porter has said that the committee has met and confirmed it. So that is one thing that I am going to be asking for your input there. The other things all there in black are things that in the past you have recommended as a non-negotiable, as something that you wanted all two or all three of the choices to include. One being Veterans Day being a holiday for all students and staff, having that little caveat for hurricane makeup days at the bottom of each of the calendars saying that days out of school due to the holidays may be affected by possible hurricane makeup days throughout the year. Also instructional staff, pre-planning days. Last year was the first year that we definitely had that as a non-negotiable because we did that survey with all of our staff and the majority, 70% of them voted to maintain that seven pre-planning days. Support staff beginning before students' first day was another one. Ending Semester One before Christmas break was another one that has been a board recommendation. And again, that would be then showing up on all three of the calendar choices. And then students' first day not being on a Friday, that was another one. Obviously, we don't have to worry about that this coming up year. And then, of course, accommodating for the schedule and guidelines. So you know, when we meet with the calendar committee, I present this screen here to them saying, so when they are in their groups designing and developing their calendar, these are things that they must include in their calendar. So when I'm asking you for those non-negotiables, these are things that all of the options will definitely have. So I ask for you now if you have any changes to these recommendations, additions, I'd like, I would love for you to share them now or also regarding the fair dates.
Can I share?
Sure, absolutely.
Any of the board?
Please.
What a big discussion came up the last couple of years about the state taking the entire month of May for testing. And I know I was in the classroom when we tried to keep the kids and test them in June and the only people in there on the study, get prepared for your exams were the teachers. And the kids did come take their exams, but they didn't come to class. But the teachers recommended, and we presented them with a calendar last year that said, when you did that last week in May, you've got a handful of kids that maybe have missed that testing window somewhere in the previous three weeks. So the teachers approved and wanted the calendar that said, we want these kids gone before Memorial Day. And they came back as a teacher work day after Memorial Day, but I would like to not have that conversation again if the board would understand that last one, accommodate the schedule and guidelines for spring testing, says four weeks beginning from May 1st and I'd like to say three weeks.
So what do you mean by three, like three weeks?
I don't want to, I don't want to dig around that last week when we want to give exams at secondary level, but we're, we're saying it's non-negotiable because the state is still, the state is saying that they want that week.
Right, well, because of the amount of tests that have to be administered, four weeks is what is needed to administer those tests wherever a student does, has an opportunity to participate.
Yeah.
And that also includes your APIB, your final exams have always been that last week as well where those half-days normally have fallen, but I mean, that includes all of that which if you shorten it, there is going to be a higher, a greater chance that you're not going to have all student participation and might not hit that 95% tested.
Which is required in order for us to get any kind of grades.
To get any kind of grades.
The pool grades.
That would be the only fear of that if you don't use the four weeks. We did four weeks, right.
But we gave school exams last week.
The last week, right. Oh, yeah, and that's what we would still be doing.
And a lot of the, a lot of the committee people say that they can't touch those days at all.
Don't touch the days for exams?
They couldn't schedule anything during that last week because the state had it. Remember, we had...
Right, but they still did their final exams during that last week.
Yeah. We had a couple calendars that said, well, we can't touch it. You know, some supposed calendars.
Okay, I'm not sure.
It was a discussion because it was a non-negotiable from the board.
Right.
But I think this is a non-negotiable from the board because it's a...
Because of the state.
From the state.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's a...
It has nothing to do with that.
It's semantics, yeah.
You are not right.
We have it as part of the non-negotiable.
If the teachers approve a calendar when we're having these exams there, then we're going to be okay with that.
No, I don't think we can approve a calendar that's going to have less than four weeks.
Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're asking? Like if we had three weeks, so then, because if you only had three weeks left, then one of those weeks would be for final exams and you've got only a two-week window for state testing? Is that what you're, I'm trying to understand what you're asking.
Last year, we had two of the calendars that said we can't do exams in that fourth week, that the kids had to come back after Memorial Day.
But they could do final exams. Like, we wouldn't have had on the district calendar when they could do final exams. It was just that there were a few calendars, there were two calendars that the students did return after Memorial Day.
Yes.
Right, and then there was some that they did not, but it was still, they still had four weeks. It was just that some of them thought that those two half-days kind of, you know, didn't really constitute two full days for testing, so the calendar, so we had the students returning after Memorial Day. Is that what you're saying? And so it would then constitute four weeks, but it still is four weeks even with the half-days.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
As long as the board understands that's what they're going to put the calendar committee.
Right, I mean, because they might decide not to have half-days.
We're not going to keep these kids after Memorial Day, I can guarantee you. I was in the classroom, they won't come.
They won't come. I'd have to look to see even like how many weeks are with them or like, you know, how that would fall where May 1st falls.
Mr. Dodd.
So I appreciate the information and the non-negotiables that we've continued to kind of stick with, is good to see in front of us. I will tell you that Easter in 2021 is on the 4th of April, so a little bit earlier. So if we did spring break, I just, I liked the counter committee to look at that possibility with the Easter holiday and maybe an option to have a week off around Easter. I mean, if we did, if the fair week was the 22nd, 26th of March, we'd be off on spring break and we'd come back basically for four days because Good Friday, we'd take that Friday off. So I don't want to, you know, there's all, I mean, there's a risk in whatever we do, but you may for people say, well, we'll just miss two weeks of school because we're on spring break and then only a short week. So I'm just kind of curious, and if we were to do that, would that open up another day somewhere in the calendar if we were to tie spring break along with Easter? So those are just some thoughts that I had, but...
That's in 2021.
2021, right.
Now, the only problem with that though is that that two-week testing window starts April 1st. That is from the state. There's a two-week testing window that every third through 10th grade tests April 1st through, was it April?
And it starts on a Thursday that week, that year.
April 1st on Thursday.
It's on a Thursday.
And if we take Good Friday off, which we have done, it's April 2nd.
Which makes sense.
But, you know, that's, that's a good point. I mean, we're already going to miss April 2nd because of Good Friday, so it would be one more testing day and that might be a reason enough not to do it.
Right.
I'm just...
But no, that would have to be something that we bring up as a consideration and thought, okay.
So just to have that as a consideration, not that it's a non-negotiable, just letting me want the calendar committee to look at it. I am a big proponent of having spring break during the fair week, but on the other hand, I wanted to know what is the consequence of us if we were to hold and wait until the fair gave us the confirmed date? What's the consequence on our end of that?
The consequence would be we would not have a final calendar until later in this school year. So it would be decisions that are made maybe over the summer or things like that based on what our, you know, following year's calendar is going to be, would have to just basically be pushed back a little bit. I mean, there are many other counties that do have, they don't have their calendar finalized until later. We just have always done it by December, but I don't think, there is nothing that I know of in writing that says that we have to have our, our calendar set by that date.
I don't think there's anything in writing where the consequence comes. We get a lot of phone calls from upset parents that we don't have a set calendar until that late of the year because a lot of them make plans a year ahead of time, our teachers and staff make plans for vacations and those types of things. That's the consequence.
Right. And when we talk about the fair board, we're talking about Mr. Hal Porter, right?
Well, there's more than just him on the board.
Oh, I know, he's the...
But he is the lead, yeah.
Director, yeah, okay. So did he confirm that they will for sure know by December or is there a chance that it may not be?
He said, he said in up to three months, we will know.
That's, that's kind of really not very definitive.
Correct.
Maybe we can just play down the call. He never has to call.
I'm assuming it's a vendor issue again.
Well, that's what he said. Oh, he definitely understands and he's probably more passionate than we are even about it being aligned because it really does help them out. He just says that it's, he says that he has run into this every three years of not having that date for, I believe it actually was three years ago when we did have that issue of, we had it planned and then it was a different date and it was after the calendar was finalized. So my fear is if that happened again, but I mean, like he said, he did, he did say that he is pretty sure that those would be the dates, but he cannot say that and I don't know if he said that three years ago, that those were going to be the dates that it did.
Ms. Powers, I think we talked over it.
Yeah, I was just saying, could we not call the vendor and say, look, you know, the school system needs some of those dates, please finalize the dates for us?
As soon as the later...
Asking or more asking, the whole system asking.
Right. I mean, I could try, absolutely.
If we were to take the dates of March 22nd, 26th as the legal affair and you started the process back on your, on your calendar, when would we be voting on it as a board? In December?
Correct, because, yes, because the, we would, well, first you would be approving the two to three calendars in, in October and then, then we would have our schools and our staff committees all vote and then we would have the winning calendar presented to you on, on December 10th.
So really, by the time October comes around, the three options, would they would be using the dates of the fair?
Oh, correct. Correct, because we meet September 18th to actually design the two, three calendars. So that's going to be when they would do it. However, like you said though, I mean, if we found out like say in, you know, October that the dates were incorrect, I mean, we would probably have to reconvene the committee to readjust those so that it could, it could work.
Well, there's no harm in letting, letting Hal Porter know and the fair board know that this is the schedule that we're dealing with.
However, like you said, though, I mean, if we found out, like, say in, you know, October, that the dates were incorrect, I mean, we would probably have to reconvene the committee to readjust those so that it could, it could work.
Well, there's no harm in letting, letting Howe-Porter know and the Fair Board know that this is the schedule that we're dealing with. I mean, and could you please, you know, expedite us, because that is something that we've all talked about doing. I guess I'd have to weigh out, I mean, I don't know how the other board members feel on, on holding off until they give us a.
I think the process, it's difficult to, to slow the process down because of all the moving parts and people, but that doesn't mean that if it comes to those recommendations, if we had, if, if after the recommendations of the, the calendars presented to us, like we said, that'll be closer to December, we can then, at that point, go back to the Fair Committee and say, listen, this is where we're at, we're going to need to make a decision. If they think they're going to be able to know something definitive, we could either go move forward at that point, or if we had to, we could table it for a month and make an adjustment at that point. Because we'll have the bookends of the year, which is kind of our critical thing in the calendar to, to develop, start date, end date, and then everything kind of starts to fill in as they go along. So I, I think if we, if we don't slow this part of the process down, but we, we give some flexibility to when the board comes to make the decision.
A final one in December?
Yeah, I think that may, that give us that opportunity.
Could we go back to the non-negotiables again?
Sure.
On that page? So if we don't know the dates of the fair, then we should probably not say that we're going to align our calendar with fair and spring break, correct? Because we can be aligning it with March 22 to 26th, which might not be the right week.
It, it may be that, that we just instead of should, will, will try, or something, something that, that gives the intention that it's still our desire to do that without it being kind of a non, you know, a mandated. Absolutely.
But yet that would allow the calendar committee to have another week for spring.
Right.
Oh, so you're saying do not have them align it this year? Say that this is where we think the fair might be, and that would mean that you might have, you're going to have calendars that might be options of multiple different weeks?
That's.
I, I think so. I think, though, if we say that, that, what was the, the one superintendent you said?
We'll make every exam to long super compared.
Okay.
And they may, even the calendar committee may be able to come up with, while they're looking at it, an alternative. There's nothing that says they can't come up with a fourth calendar that shows it with a, not that I'm saying you do, I mean, that says that everything's the same, but that, but that day, what, that week is what I mean.
Right.
Is where that, that there's an optional different week for spring break.
So are you saying that I, it is recommended then to tell them that they, here's when we, because I feel like if I tell them that this is going to be where Howe-Porter is saying that even leaves the fair is going to be, and we are wanting it to be aligned as much as possible, then all of the small groups are going to make it that week.
I think the only thing is, is you can say that, if you say that by the calendar meeting, we know what that date is. If we don't, then they can't align it.
Okay. So if we don't know it by the 18th, then take that whole line out?
Yeah, I, I don't, unless there's an anticipated date that, that we, we think, but it doesn't sound like we have one.
Well, the anticipated one is the one he gave.
Is the 27th, right, the 26th.
But that might be right. If we go ahead and do our calendar as we've done it, because we're, we're doing it for our parents and our kids and our teachers, then maybe the Fair Committee will say, gee, maybe the better is lying there. When we were doing this, and I was talking to some of the Ag teachers and the kids that are very involved in the fair, it doesn't seem to matter whether it's a spring break week or a fair week, if they're aligned or not. It just doesn't, those kids are going to do what they do, whether they're on spring break or not.
And I will tell you, the last two weeks of March, there isn't testing.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? So in the past, we used to start testing earlier on, now with the new situation, like we start testing later, so there isn't a conflict with testing. Now, of course, unless you, you can't do spring break at the beginning of April or during May, but that would be the only concern. So if we have the dates, then bring it up, but if we do not have confirmed dates, which is very likely, then I would remove the aligned calendar.
The, the other thing, too, is in past years, I thought there was, there was some differing opinions among staff and administrators as to what was more challenging for the school district to be able to do, of whether we had fair week, what happened to the Ag, and because Ag had to be out at the fair, then there was impacts, it seemed like, either way to the school when we had it. So, you know, again, I'm not, and I'm not sure what that is off the top of my head. I want to say, though, that there was, there was issues with, if the Ag teacher's out and, and at the fair, then there's basically that, what do they do with the students for that entire week? But I don't know if that was correct.
I mean, there's, it's just a, just a weird.
It's just, okay.
Yeah. But that would be for any week.
Yeah.
I guess you would include the spring break, because they weren't here anyway.
Those, those kids that are playing at the fair, they're just a whole different breed. They, they don't care whether they're giving up the spring break, but they get a spring break, they just do their thing. But the other thing is, remember Friday is Student Day, and that's huge for the fair success.
Revenue.
So if the kids are out, you know, we all.
And the teachers had to ride the bus. Just saying.
But we're not doing that anymore, so that's huge for them. So Amy, maybe we can look at two calendars or the calendars and put two weeks there, both spring break, back-to-back, because usually it's like the second or third week and more.
Right. So one of the calendars having spring break, when we, but then having another calendar where it's different.
Or have one calendar with two weeks, spring break and fair, and then if we can get the notice from them when it is, then we will know exactly what we're going to put. Hopefully they'll get it set, because, you know, they contract with the group that goes all the state, so sometimes it's out of their hands.
Right. That's what it kind of sounded like to me, is that it is not really in-house hands, like it's, it's there, they have to.
Emily, I'm not going to prefer to have the fair during Easter weekend and on Easter, but, you know, I just, I would throw that out there.
Amy, do your best.
Thanks.
She's good.
Any other? Oh, that would be great.
Would you go back on a little bit? Keep going back, keep going back. There, that's from committee members.
It's two pa, it's two slides of our committee members. The first one includes all of our, where you see there's, the, the green column are actually the, the people that attend the committee meetings. So Shelley Shones, for example, is our elementary representative, then we have a middle school, then a high school representative, but then there's a calendar, calendar contact person for each school. So those calendar contact people, one, oversee the voting process and all that, but they also get any feedback from teachers from their school and then communicate it to Shelley or to Kevin or to Melody.
So just the three that are in green or?
Are the three that come from those three, but then all the green on the second slide also attend.
Okay.
Because we have our parent reps, we have administrators, you see they're from SAC, PTA, WTC's involved in there, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're in good shape. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize, I'm just getting myself together here. Okay, finances, I believe, we're safety, secure the systems. Oh, instructional support recommendations, I'm sorry. Ms. Wayne, I apologize.
Good afternoon, I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Move approval of the superintendent's recommendations for personnel support, personnel as appears on the Goldenrod.
So a motion by Ms. Count, second by Mr. Don, to approve the support, and, sorry, superintendent's support, I'm sorry, superintendent's instructional and support recommendations on the Goldenrod. Any questions or comments?
I just see seven appointments. Are we down into the 30s?
No, we are still at 42.
Okay.
We have 15 support and 42 instructional posted.
Yeah.
Congratulations to Coach Frederick.
Yeah.
I believe that's 30-something years and.
Oh, God.
And then I saw a name, I saw two names identical. Thisters. All right, that's what I was going to say, that is so cool. We'll take that. Are they from Pittsburgh as well? Colorado, Colorado. Sounds awesome.
But I do have to mention from the last meeting, I think Ms. Powers asked you about where they're coming from?
Yes.
And I was so pleased to see when you responded, 45 came from Citrus County.
Yes.
So we are some of our.
We are seeing a lot of employees going into education as a second career.
I had, I'm sorry, I had a motion by Ms. Count, second by Mr. Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero, and we apologize, but the, the online voting will be off for the moment.
Thank you.
Bringing to you the approval of the 2020 17P Safety and Security Systems, parts and consumables. This was pulled because the backup attached was for the, the projector bid, so Lisa had given you all the backup for this bid. This is for the safety and security equipment we buy with general maintenance funds. It's also part of the security grant that we received from the state for school hardening. Eleven S.
I have a motion by Mr. Don, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Safety and Security Systems Services, parts and consumables. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item I'd like to bring to you is our final budget amendment for the 2018, 2019 year, and you received copies early this morning, and printed copies are on your desk. This is just our final cleanup, this is where we approve budget number 11.
You've got to vote if you have a mind.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We did just vote on that, I thought. Did I do a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, we're not, it's not going to come through. The votes are not going to come through now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But thank you for, so a budget, a budget amendment number 11.
Budget number 11. So this is our final budget amendment for, for last year. This, we're just rolling all the unused budget in, back into the fund balance, so I ask you to approve this at this time.
Move to approve budget amendment 11.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Don, to approve budget amendment number 11. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next item is to approve the 18, 19 annual financial report, and that you got a small portion of it this morning, the larger packet is on your desk now. I'm going to hand out a little handout I created to kind of summarize it, all 109 pages into one little spreadsheet. Okay, so this sheet, the first sheet, it's just a summary of all of, all the funds together with their final balances, the net changes. We did overall increase all our funds by about 6.7 million this year. So everybody seemed pretty happy, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Baumer, Mr. Pistone, Ms. Himmel, Mr. Mullen, everybody seemed pretty happy with our ending balances this year. So are there any questions at this time on the annual report? That's for, we reserve, we have the McKay scholarships that the state, they say this is your FEFP for next year, but we're going to, after all the Mackays come in, they reduce our funding by that much. So we, we reserve that so that we don't, we don't budget those funds. We don't budget that because we're, we don't actually ever receive it, and it runs right around 500,000. So a few years ago, we decided to start reserving that amount. We used to also reserve for the self-insurance fund, but we don't, we haven't had to use that, so the auditors wanted us to take that off. The larger packet you received today, this is, this is what will end up, the auditors will end up auditing us on. This is our government-wide financial statements, and I know to most everybody it's, it's Greek, but what this is, this larger document, pretty much, if we shut down for business on June 30th of 2019, this is a complete statement of where we would stand financially. If we liquidated all our assets, we paid all our liabilities, and where we would end up. And basically, this year, we ended up increasing our net position by 2.4%, so that's a good thing, because every year they start adding more GAZBs. Years ago, they added figuring in post-employment benefits. Another year, they, we had, now we have to allocate a liability for FRS. And now these are not true things that we have to pay every year, but if we had to actually shut down for business and sell our buildings and pay out all of our bills, pay everybody their sick leave payouts, pay out their retirement benefits, pay out their insurance claims, this is where we would stand. So that's what this larger document is. This is, and then this is what the auditors take, and they look at that, and they audit these numbers for us. So that's kind of the short and sweet version of what, why we have to do this every year. I do want to recognize Ms. Dukowitz over here, she has been diligently working, if you've driven by on the weekends, we've been here working on this, her and Ms. Strickland. Ms. Strickland's son is coming home from the military today, he's been gone for two years, so she's not at the meeting. And Ms. Bennett also.
Excuse.
Yes, Ms. Bennett also works on the cost report. So these are, the finance department, this is like our, our final thing that we have to do for the whole year of, you know, managing all this money. So I just want to thank them for all their hard work and answer any questions you might have at this time. And if none, I ask you to approve it.
I don't believe we have a motion on the annual. No. So I just need a motion, second.
Move to approve the budget amendment. I want 11.
Run 11 Y.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I move to approve the annual financial report.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the annual financial report. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, wow.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Do you want us to?
Try it.
Try it.
And you go ahead, and you can start.
Budget updates?
Is everybody locked in their phones?
Everybody's locked.
Okay. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, I have a few minutes before, you know, citizen comment time and, and the public hearing, so the next sheet I gave you, I just wanted to update you on the budget, is, is, you know, our favorite little results from operations sheet. And the color, it's yellow and blue at the ends. The yellow sheet is what you just approved, and that is your actual ending fund balances. The blue column is where we are budgeting for next year. So that kind of sums up the budget. As you know, we don't have a, a budget book this year, and when it comes time for the public hearing, we'll just be voting on the budget in the millage, not the work plan this year. So the page after that is a consolidation of all the, all the funds, so you can see where that budget is in regards to all the funds. We are budgeting about a 3.89% fund balance for next year, which keeps us within line of our 3.5 board policy. Our expenses are going up. Our expenses are going up mostly because of our salary increase for our teachers this year. We also, FRS did go up. Our SRO contract went up a little. We added the guardians. So we do have some expenses that we're incurring this year. You know, we're getting a little bit more funding from the FEFP as they shovel those little, you know, numbers around for us. So are there any questions at this time about the budget for next year? I mean, we kind of have gone over this at every meeting. We've gone over the whole process. So, yes, Mr. Dodd?
Yes, so I appreciate the information and work of you and your staff in getting this ready for us. In reference to the bond and sinking fund that we have, Crystal High School project, and I spoke to you a little bit about this earlier, about the opportunities that we may have to refinance or renegotiate that lower interest rate. And I know you brought up a little bit about some extra monies we had received. So can you just kind of talk about that for a minute? And, you know, I would like to get some more information.
And we did speak and I did do a little research. And our bonds right now, the interest rate that we pay is six point five percent. Of that, the IRS subsidizes five point eight-six percent. So the balance line of the interest that we pay is point six-four percent interest. The going rate right now for bonds is four point two, and we would lose our subsidy. And that was as of today, when I went out on the bond market and looked after I spoke with you.
There's obviously a lot of work to do when you float a bond or when you renegotiate. But I just wanted to touch base on subsidy. Is that something that we know if we were to go and look at a lower rate to refinance that? Are we definite that we would lose the subsidy?
We would not, there's not a subsidy at this time available, according to when I went out and looked on the bond market. This was part of the Build America bond, the Build America, the R of the stimulus money when Barack Obama went into office that he put out there. So this is all part of that American Recovery Act subsidy funds. And that is one reason I know that we went out for the bonds at that time, because it was really a true moment in time where we were going to get those kind of rates for that.
Right. So even though the rate we're paying at six point five percent, which is pretty hefty in the bond market today, the fact that we have that stimulus money that is a reduction still puts us at a...
Less than one percent.
And, you know, the subsidy, the subsidized amount is not something that can be renegotiated.
No, not at this time, no. I mean, unless the president came out with another... Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Entirely stimulus package is probably not going to be there.
I don't foresee that at this time.
Well, that's good, good information. That's good information for us to remind the public too, because sometimes when you look at those figures, I mean, the people that have bought our bond at six point five percent is, that's, you know, a good amount at the time. But it was a wise decision for the board to be able to get that stimulus money and to be able to go into that. So thank you for that information.
You're welcome. The last sheet that I gave you is the five-year work plan. And this is our version of the work plan. Like I said, the DOE has not released the work plan and opened it at this time for us to submit it and approve it tonight. If there's any questions on that, Mr. Dixon's here. He's been in constant contact with the DOE, trying to figure out when they're going to open it. Soon?
There's no date.
There's no date.
But I have been in contact with other districts and they're all on the same boat.
I know we've been, you know, very proactive in past years, and I appreciate that, both from staff and at the board of, you know, tying the two together and really making it a part of our budget and our planning. As a result of that, I know, for example, we send that right over, or used to, to the Board Accounting Commission. So maybe if we can make contact with them, that if they don't get it in their normal expectation, we, you know, again, that's not, as a result of our doing, that's, you know, just a result of them, I mean, of the state's delay.
I did tell them that.
Okay, good. We're overachievers and just, you know.
I think Mr. Dixon actually found out that us in Pinellas are the only ones that actually approve it this early normally, so...
We always approve before them, though.
Oh.
I'm sure we did.
It's probably, I'm sure it's five thirty-one when they approve it.
Exactly.
Which is just another testament to getting this done and getting it. We want to get it over with and get it out there. So just looking at this, you know, our taxable values went up, so our mileage is always one point five. We're bringing in a little bit more money that way. Safety and security, they did just, right before we were finishing this, they came out with, it's about two hundred, a little, right around two hundred and fifty we're going to be getting next year for, or this year, for safety and security hardening grants. Our CUNDs are going up because we've paid off the debt part of that. So we get, as you can see in like year, next year and the following years, about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from that, which is nice because PICO funding is gone at this point. You know, things can always change next year when the legislatures meet. But I think Mr. Bishop was pretty happy with the five-year plan. We're ending a lot better than four hundred thousand at the end of five years. We have about thirteen million, so is there any questions at this time? We get E-rate on our utilities. The E-rate that's here in the capital pan, Ms. Androski, I don't know, is she here? Yeah, she might be able to speak on it, I don't know. I know we're talking about expanding our wireless, our WAN, and they will, E-rate will reimburse us for some of that. She can probably answer your question if you have some.
Do you have a specific question you would like me to answer? Or just tell you how we're going?
Yeah, yeah, where we're going, I know how it can and, you know, all of that. But right now, what is E-rate applied to?
Right now, they pay us back. We pay the bill upfront for our internet and networking, wiring when we have to do that. And so then we submit the bills and along with our application for reimbursement, and then they tell us. It's mostly networking and...
We did get some equipment money for the last two years.
Right. And so our plan now that we need to do is we want to work on applying for some reimbursement for, as Ms. Wilson said, we need to work on the wiring at a couple of our schools. And so we are going to apply for help with that. So we have to submit.
They have different levels of funding and based on how much money they build up in their PACs. Just for internet, they could offer for equipment, certain equipment, and we have to apply and see what we can do.
There are different categories we can apply for. So that is our plan to do so, to help offset some of the expenses.
And she said, we're trying to get them, we have to upgrade our services of our schools if we're trying to get that reimbursed after we spend the money.
Court members, anything else on the budget?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, you worked very well.
Ms. Dodd, it looked like you, did you have a...
Thank you.
Okay, just one more.
And I will see you back at five thirty.
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw, Attorney, Legal Matters. You love that. Exactly. Approve of the minutes.
Move approval. Second.
A motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Counts to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. We've got an opportunity for citizens' comments now, if you want to, not have to wait fifteen minutes. So I'm very excited, you can all come up together. I'm very excited about them and I don't want to take anything away from them so that they can share. Except I will just say, I got some messages over the last thing saying, "I just got talked about in the hospital and we've got something we want to talk to you guys about." So I'm going to try, Ms. Becky, are you going to talk first?
Yes, we are, we just want to do together. Thank you.
Sure, you go right ahead. Can you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Becky Bading, and I'm an emergency room nurse here at Citrus Memorial. I'm not here per se representing HCA. We are all here today representing what it is that we do. I brought what I consider experts in the field as well today. And the reason that we're here is because we just wanted to educate you all a little bit on what we believe is so important, which is bystander CPR and educating our high schoolers. So I've been a nurse for twenty-six years. And I think we can all agree that we're seeing more and more where grandparents are raising their grandchildren from an early age on. And what we see on our side is what happens when the elderly of these grandparents raising their children suffer cardiac arrest in their home. And the only people that are really witness that are those children. We see what happens when they come here and unfortunately, they don't survive. Come on, Dr. Passipis, Dr. Macipalati. You know, the truth is, we see the average person's nightmare every day in our ER. That's what we do. And part of our job sometimes is that we have to bring the families aside and let them know that their loved ones didn't survive. It's probably the hardest thing that we do, but it's what we do. But I want to tell you that there is a haunting look in a child's eyes when you tell them that their grandparent died. And they look at you and they say, "Is it something I did? Is it because I didn't know what I was doing? I tried, but I didn't know CPR." That look I've seen too many times. And we've talked about it in the ER. What can we do to help you all? We are willing, it's your direction, to volunteer our time on our days off. And we will come to your school, we'll come to your gym class. We want to cast the net very wide so that we don't miss any of the children. We've talked about things like, could we bring the YMCA, utilize them, do something on the weekends? But our concern is that we would miss a lot of the children who would be unable to come to something like that. So I have, Cheryl is here with me. She is an expert at educating on what happens. And the good part about what happens when you do teach this, and I'd like for her to speak. But after all of us are finished speaking, we will meet with you anytime you want. We'll do whatever you say. We just wanted to let you know how much we care about you and respect you all, and we want to help. So that's really why we're here today. So Cheryl's next.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Bright, and I'm in the emergency room with her. So I'm the statistics person, love that stuff. So what we have annually, excuse me, is that approximately three hundred and fifty thousand Americans will have a sudden cardiac arrest, but seven thousand of those will be children. So we talk about, excuse me, like the grandparents and things like that, but there's also that children component to it. So when we have the bystander CPR that we teach many people, children, adults, it doubles the chances of survival for these people. So they have the chain of survival that they talk about, the American Heart Association. And the first two links are calling nine-one-one, which is much easier now with everybody having a cell phone. So that part's easy. And then also early intervention or that chest compression or CPR. Now, your dispatchers will walk you through that, they stay on the phone with you. But to have that tool in your toolbox to be able to recognize or have that knowledge that you know what to do is vitally important. And the other piece with that is, is that for every minute that we don't have any intervention, we look at a ten percent reduction of survival. So if we can instill some of these skills in their toolbox for these children or even the adults to intervene, then we increase the rates of survival. At the end of the day, we're trying to keep the blood flowing through the heart and the brain so people survive. It's not only about your family or children, it's about your strangers, it's about mentors. So with a simple set of skills that we can teach in about ninety minutes, completely at your direction, anything that we could do to help, that we can positively impact that for anybody who might be caught in that situation. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anand Ramniraj, and I do apologize for my attire. I just came out of the emergency department. I am, I'm the recent new site medical director at Citrus Memorial. But I come here as a fellow community member, and it's really a pleasure to be here and for us to have the time to speak on such an important issue. And, you know, each and every day, we deal with death and dying, and it becomes something that's so, almost a part of life for me. But for that child, as we heard about earlier, the statistics become meaningless because that one person who means the most to you being affected by this is more, is the most overwhelming and tragic experience that you could ever have in life. And to be helpless and be not able to do anything at the time that your loved one needs it the most is the most paralyzing feeling that you can have. And so this is our way of giving to the community, giving to the children of the community, and ultimately to all members, because we'd be educating the children on the basics of CPR. What do you do when someone collapses in front of you? How do you react, how do you respond? A patient comes to me in the emergency department that's been down for twenty minutes without any CPR, is unfortunately not going to have much of a life to live versus someone who's had CPR started right away. So the minutes matter, and I think that the offer that we're extending here is not on behalf of any institution or organization. It's just basically our love for the people of the community and wanting to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, I ran in a little bit late. So, and Dr. Ramniraj is, I think, better, you know, better attile than me. I literally walked in from a small gathering at my friend's place. My name is Suman Macipalati, I've been a cardiologist for eight years. There are two quick examples that I want to share with you guys, which should tell us how important it is to save those lives, to have a meaning to the rest of the family. Sixty-five-year-old, recently got married, his first wife passed away, so he got married, moved into Citrus County and went for a go-karting thing in downtown area. After the go-karting race, he did very well, so he got out of it and went, yay! And next thing, he collapsed. Unfortunately, I heard, I don't know this for sure, but unfortunately I heard that there were two policemen in that audience, not a duty, but just there. And they saw this person, and there was a nursing student who wanted to start CPR. Policeman said, "We call nine-one-one, hold on." So as Dr. Ramniraj said, if you don't do CPR, there is no point in having our nine-one-one system, even if it's the most effective system where they are there in five minutes. After five minutes, as Cheryl pointed out, every minute, you lose ten percent chance of survival. In five minutes, the chance of survival is only fifty percent. And even then, remember, brain is the most easily affected organ when there's no blood flow. So even if you survive, you'll be brain dead. So unfortunately, this patient came, we did everything that we could, but we couldn't give the poor lady, her husband, who she just got married to, back. And the second example is the one that Becky mentioned, who's my employee, who used to call me her adopted son, and I used to call her my adopted American mother. So I was very attached to this lady, she was wonderful, she did everything for me at the office. And one day, when her grandson called me on the phone saying, "Dr. Macipalati, grandma is not responding." And that was literally right after she went into cardiac arrest. I told him, "Please start CPR." He asked me, "How do I do CPR?" So that shows how, how much of a difference we can make to save these people. The thing that really opened my eyes to CPR and cardiac arrest survival is Kings County in Seattle. Kings County, back in the sixties, had a survival rate for CPR of only ten to fifteen percent. Do you guys have any idea how much the survival in Kings County is today as we speak? Anyone want to take a wild guess? It's seventy percent. Even in a hospital setting, you cannot have a... Even in a hospital setting, you cannot have a 70% survival rate. That's because people in the hospital are sick. But nowhere in this country do people have a 70% chance of survival. Do you all know why? Only because everybody in that community can do CPR. Everyone, every single one of you, everyone here, everyone behind me can do CPR. That's the only reason. CPR significantly saves lives, to the point where we would give that grandmother back to the grandson, that husband back to the wife that just got married. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hamel, I know she wants to share some things. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask Becky, if you will give Scott your phone number, or put it on this card, then we can have Scott contact you, and we can work something out for this week.
Something, oh, I'm sorry.
The cardiologist, I didn't get your name on. I'm so sorry. Thomas made me eat all that chocolate.
You know, one of the reasons why I was excited about you coming and about the contact is the board, the superintendent, and the, the educational team. This has been a priority that we've been working on in the same way, that we are now instituting that as part of our pupil progression plan, which is our policy. And Dr. Heber, since you're here, do you mind maybe, or Ms. Kit, sharing that little portion? Because I know you've been working on that, and I think it's good, it's a tie-in for the community to hear with that. And I think it's also good for you all to know kind of where directions. So, Dr. Heber?
Yeah, we, we are in the process right now of, of instituting that as part of our HOPE class at the high school, high school level. Now, I will tell you, when we met with our high school direction team, one of the concerns the, the team had was making it a graduation requirement. And we felt like that was, we didn't want to hold kids back, but we did feel like we wanted to make sure that we provided it to students in the school. So the struggle we had was figuring out how to offer that. You've just brought a great opportunity here that you're willing that we can work with you to say, let's set up some schedules where we can offer to the students in the school, because that's what we were struggling with, providing that instruction, you know, as much as we can, so...
And the wording, I think, is that they'll, that we would provide them with, I wanted to say CPR skills or compression skills.
Now, what they were looking at, and this is from our student progression plan committee, was, you know, there's the, you know, showing some videos and explaining it, but if you all are talking about maybe going more hands-on, that is probably what they need more. I'm not saying they don't need the, the other piece, but that was the piece where we need the expertise from you all and the time to help do that.
And I know, and I'm going to, I want the, in case there's anyone else on the board to share, but I, I am CPR certified. I've been CPR certified for over 10 years. If you can start your car, you should be able to help start a person. And that's pretty much been my, my belief on that. We also, you know, Mr. Bishop, who's over in the corner there, he is, he heads up as the assistant superintendent, our athletics. Our athletics, emergency action plans, all include a component of compressions and providing that 911 call, and then if needed, immediately going into compression. So this is a, a big part of us, but boy, you're bringing us an extra solution. And I, I have a sense, Mr. Dodd, you may. Because, so, Mr. Dodd?
I know, I appreciate you all coming. You know, last month, we had a discussion on the pupil progression plan, and the wording that I focused on was may versus will. And we have a may, students may be taught CPR. But it sounds like as we look at this, as we get the opportunity to promote this more, I mean, I would hope that maybe next year, when we come back with the pupil progression plan, or at some point, maybe we could make it a graduation requirement for CPR training for all of our students. And I understand very much the concern over the graduation requirement, and we don't want someone not to graduate because they didn't have CPR certification. And there are different certifications. I mean, I had to talk about Nature Coast EMS at the fair last year, had, or two years ago, had a big program there where they were giving out T-shirts for showing the skills for CPR. So I really appreciate you all offering to come into the classroom. My son is a freshman at Citrus High School. He has hope right now. And during the open house, I spoke to his teacher and looked in the, looked at the book that they have on CPR. And so it is, it is there, but I think that it would be much more, it would be much better received if we had some healthcare professionals coming in and, and being there to coach or to teach that, that process.
I'm, I'm a coach also. So I did CPR every year I was in the classroom also, and we did. So my major concern right now is, is you're talking about pupil progression at high school level, but a lot of our children that are at the lower levels are with their grandparents. And they're the ones that, how, how, how far-reaching is this plan of yours and your benevolence?
There is no ceiling in what we'll do. There's many more of us who will help. But we are completely at your direction. Whatever age you'd like us to start, we will do.
Because it would, I just see children being empowered because they, they sometimes, especially when they're with their grandparents and are in a strange home, they're, they're afraid.
And as I was mentioning earlier, I know it's a far shot, but my goal is everybody in this county should be able to do CPR. Literally, everybody. And obviously, really, a little infant won't be able to do it, but anybody who has the arm strength to push the chest, my goal is everybody should be able to do it. And that's how Kings County started 30, 40 years ago, and they reached that goal within five to 10 years. And since then, their survival has been 70%.
Maybe if we instituted it in the classroom, they can have some kind of recognition for the class that does 100%.
Ms. Patterson?
I also did CPR certification. Oh, follow us here. And I am so moved by you people coming in and also your expertise, because, you know, any of us can say, "Oh, I'm trained in that." We're not experts. Y'all are experts, and that means a lot when you go in front of that classroom and you say that, hey, I'm a nurse there, I'm a doctor there, I've been trained. The kids will listen to you. So many times, we, we say that, you know, we want the children to be able to, to learn stuff. We want the focus to be on the children. That's what we're all about here. And to have someone sit there, all of y'all, and they say, "That's what I'm about to do. I want the children to be able to learn." So hats off to you. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dodd?
For your knowledge, we do have AEDs at all of our schools, and that's, we had that for several years now. So at all of our schools and building, or, I don't say cost of it, but at the, the different buildings have AEDs also. And of course, FHSA requires AEDs at athletic events. So we've got, we've done a lot in that area.
And just to add off, I want to talk about your CPR.